I mean, the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the invocation? I've got it right here. Oh, my God. Okay. Heavenly Father, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us listen to others as they share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team, combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us work together rather than individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of cooperation and work in our shared mission? Amen. Item four, the consent agenda. Anything to pull? Austin, do you have anything to pull?
I don't.
John?
I'd like to pull item E, please.
Ron?
I'd like to pull item J.
Melissa?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to pull, if possible, if it comes to allow for item G. And also the item I.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay. A motion on the other items? I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. Items A, B, C, D, F, H, J, and K.
Somebody pulled J.
I pulled J, please.
Okay. Without J.
H and K.
Excuse me?
K was the last one.
Yeah. Okay. J is on... Okay, not J, but K. Anybody else? Did somebody make a motion then?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. Items pulled. Item E.
I pulled item E because MKUC is my employer, and I just want to be transparent here. This contract was not... For bridge inspection, was not awarded by ODOT. It was awarded by ODOT, not the city. And it was before I was elected, so I just want to pull it so I can abstain for ethical purposes.
Oh, okay. Can I get a motion to approve E?
Motion to approve E.
Second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Abstain.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. Item G. Mark?
Yes. Counsel, what we'd like to do is just make two minor changes and recommend approval of this agreement. The first change comes on page 131. It mentions November 3rd, 2021 is the date to near end of this agreement. And we'd like that to be February, January 24, 2022. And on page 132, it asks for us to select an option to be paid for reimbursement. And we'd like to make that the first option, which being dispersments from the company to the customer, which is the city twice per month on the fifth and the twentieth. And that would be the two changes we'd recommend approval on.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe you could help answer these. How long have we been using this system? Since 2014? Okay. One thing that kind of caught my eye was in item two on page 132, it says fee changes. Connect processing fees may be changed with prior written notice from city force to customer. Kind of seems to me that they could just notify us that they're changing, and we don't have any say in it. Wouldn't it... Is that customary?
It's really kind of a pass-through and the customer is actually using the service and thing. But that is customary from their proprietary standpoint.
I do have one question, I guess. Are we currently using this to collect the fees? Or is this going to be in addition to what we're doing?
This will be in addition to it.
Okay. Okay. And that's something you wanted to do? Okay, good.
Now, may I... This is a service for our customers.
Sure, yeah. So they don't have to... They can use credit cards and not write checks?
Anything else on that? Any motion on G, please?
Item... Go ahead.
I move that we approve item G with the change that the agreement date entered into as January 24th, 2022. And the dispersments be distributed to customer twice per month on the 5th and the 20th of each month.
Second.
Austin?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Item I. Mark?
Yes. Mayor, our mayor pro tem in council, I'd ask that this side of the poll and we'll bring it back at a later date. Technical issue which I missed when putting the agenda together. I take full responsibility for it, so I'd ask that the...
And brought back to the next meeting?
Bring it back to the city council as soon as we have it all together.
I make a motion to remove I and bring it back to the next meeting?
Hopefully, we'll have it ready. With the assumption that a vehicle is available.
Second that motion.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Item J?
Yes, thank you. On these deer signs, I thought that the... Or deer crossing signs on Edmund Road, I really thought that it's a a little bit or a lot undefined how many signs, where the signs are going to be. And it starts setting a precedence. And I know, you know, in my capacity, you know, working for Oklahoma County with deer signs and a lot of, you know, strong game trail deer crossings, you know, in areas where it's very, very evident. And it's not uncommon to find, you know, a hit deer, you know, every couple of months, you know, at one particular location. I don't... I really don't think we have a history of that, you know, on Edmund Road. I've seen deer run across it in a couple of locations, but then, you know, you start putting those signs up in a couple of areas. I mean, there... People know that there's deer, you know, when you've got trees and water, you know. I don't think it was specific enough. I don't think... I don't think it's really going to provide much benefit. I would move to deny item J until there's more clarity and more definition for it.
Could I possibly suggest that we could, instead of denying it, maybe move it to the next meeting? This was the mayor's request, and maybe I'll have more information on that item. And we can visit within the locations of signs. That's possible?
Okay. I'll amend my motion to move this to the next meeting for further discussion.
Will that be sent out to everybody? Put you all aside?
No, what we do is bring it back to the full council.
Yeah, my motion is to bring it, you know, to put it on the next month meeting for further discussion.
I second that motion.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. Presentation of the award. Mark?
Yes. If I could read a statement here and then, Mayor Pro Tem, if you and I could do the honor of presenting the talk to the individuals involved. What we... The administrative team evaluated looked at a number of nominations for this award, and we determined that Valerie and David Cumming are recipients for 2021. And I'd like to read this statement. Valerie Cumming began work for the city of Piedmont in 2015, where she oversees the municipal court. She is a certified court clerk and is working, according to her knowledge, to become master certified. Since 2019, Valerie has sat on the board for the Oklahoma Municipal Court Clerks Association. In 2018, David Cumming, wanting to give back to the community, became volunteer firefighter. In 2018, David was awarded the Rescue and Life Saving Award. And in 2019, the Heroism Award. In 2020, he became a full-time firefighter for the city. In deciding to award Employee of the Year to David and Valerie Cumming, and we thought two is better than one, the senior management team felt that they demonstrated what is best in our city employees. That is dedication to the city. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the other nominees for this award. And they were Robin Murray, who's in HR, who's our HR manager. John Moore, who's in our building and community development department. And Alan Settlement, who's in our public works department. And all three of those individuals also deserve recognition for the work that they've done this past year. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd be so kind as to come with me and present the award. His lovely wife. And she told me she wanted to be first in terms of being announced. That keeps harming me, apparently. I'll let you move that. Oh, boy. I told her if you stand sideways, it looks like you're running.
The photo mops.
Oh!
Thank you.
Congratulations?
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Oh! Okay. Our next item is citizens' comments. I've got Chris Miller.
Good evening. My name is Chris Miller. I'm the president of Champion Home Loans of Oklahoma City. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of all my clients. They're trying to buy my home off 1574 James Circle. This property is located in Cottonwood State's addition. We ran into a little bit of pickup, and I've learned more about zoning than I ever wanted to know. This property, when the appraiser called the city to get the zoning listed on it, listed as Act One. An Act One distinction is a minimum five-acre tract and non-residential. So, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the mortgage world, that everything basically is backed by anybody, Freddie Macs. They're not going to back anything that's not residential. And also, they won't back anything that you can't rebuild the house on. So, right now, my client is in a pickup. Doing some research, and Bud and Scott probably more than he wanted. We discovered that in September 2005, before this neighborhood, or as this neighborhood was getting developed, it actually was voted in as RE2. And I have a copy of those notes from that minute section from the city council act. Sometime between 2005 and current, those zoning maps have been lost. And there's no record showing that this is a residential plan. Currently, there's approximately 20, 30 homes in this neighborhood. There's three-quarter acre tracts. And as it stands, these homes can't be sold. Now, you can get a conventional loan where they can hold the note. That's not backed by anybody or Freddie. That is an option. Some of them can't be prepared up. But this particular client is a VA client. They just got out of the service. And it's a bad deal. Other problem we're having with this is we're needing some change pretty quick on this. Because it's pretty obvious this is a neighborhood. Somewhere, there's been something lost in the mix here. But the current market interest rates are climbing fast. When I started this loan, they were at 2.75%. We have extended this loan about as long as we can. If I have to relock them, they're at 3.5%. The economic effect on them is about $100 a month, about $35,000 of a lifetime left. The current seller of the home is at about $1,500 a month on their house payment that they're paying while they have their other home that they moved into. So, I really want to plead with the city council that we can make a change quickly to get this corrected and booked so this neighborhood can have some more real estate traffic.
May I inquire? You said you had the minutes from the city council meeting where the zoning was reapproved?
I'll write anything, it's okay.
Take your time.
Okay.
This is the section of votes and everything.
All right. So, we really can't take any action on this at this exact time during this meeting because it's not on the agenda. But I can guarantee you that I'll be following up. And so will Kevin to get this straightened out.
Okay. Not to be too busy, but...
I understand. I understand.
What do you think the term time of this?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, where we go? We'll consult with legal counsel immediately following this meeting to see what actions we need to take.
Thank you, guys.
If I recall, I believe in administrative change, the city did enact a methodology to correct administratively these zoning problems, did we not?
It's for homes built prior to a certain date.
Well, this is...
Yeah, I believe it's...
Okay. This has come up before.
Yeah.
We've had this before. We...
Especially since we got minutes here, we should take care of the whole subdivision while we're at it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm saying tomorrow. We fix this... You have this guy satisfied? Tomorrow, you can hear from me.
There we go. All right.
Brittany Anderson?
Hello, I'm...
Yes.
Kevin can't hear me. Can you hear me, Kevin?
Yes, okay.
I just came to express concern. I'm stranger to where I live. I live on Mustang Road between 164th and 178. Beginning in 2020, they started what I believe is they were trying to reap logic water lines. I've talked with Melissa Ashford a couple of times about it before I had a city council member respond to me. She did take care of business a couple of times. It's still a safety issue. There is PVC pipes sticking out from where they were looking, I guess, to move the lines. They've been there for almost two years. They filled them with sand, the holes that were probably six or seven feet deep. While that fixed the problem for a short period, it was not a long-term solution. I've seen horses step in the holes and nearly break their legs, which would be catastrophic to the family who owned it. It's exactly for my property. It's exactly where the bus stop is. And there's easily close to a dozen kids that get off that bus stop right there, ranging from prepay clear up to high school. And so, I'm encouraging you to look at it. I would hate for the city to fall into some lawsuit because some of these are from these dangerous areas, and they're very hard to see. We actually broke our mower mowing by it this summer. So, I'm sort of trying to make sure that all councilors at one time are aware of the issue that they're going on out for two years because the road is supposed to be fixed in 2020. So, I've been told it's happening. It's coming for two years. So, obviously, I'm not hurry. I'm patient, but I just want you guys to be aware of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I have two more forms. I'm going to hold those off until we get to the topic that they're addressing. Move to scheduled business. Discussion, possible action. Directing.
Public hearing.
We're done. We've got everybody's form, and we're going to hear from these people when their item comes up.
So, a motion to close the public hearing?
Did we open it? I don't remember opening it.
No, we just had citizens' comments is where we're at.
Okay, sir.
Okay. Moving on. Discussion and possible action. Directing city staff to officially notify Mark and Phil LLC that a portion of McKenzie Trail in Sanador One was not accepted by the city of Piedmont as a public street. John Isie?
Yeah, I just asked if this... We need to send... City staff needs to send a letter to the developer, Mark and Phil LLC, to inform them that their section of their street that they constructed was not accepted as a public street. And I think we just need to notify them with a letter. That's all I want to say.
Right. This is also kind of follow-up to when the as-bills were submitted. And there was visible evidence, you know, that the road has a lot of, you know, experiencing damage, cracking, sloughing. And in addition, the motion that was approved was to have the, you know, city attorney and the city engineer to investigate why the road is doing that, why the road appears to be substantially different from what was approved in the plans for length of box and width of fill and everything for the roadway. And so, I think this letter should just state that due to the general non-conformance and damage seen on the road that we are not accepting that section of 800 feet until further investigation is done.
You get a motion?
Yes. I move that city staff officially notify Mark and Phil LLC that an 800-foot section of McKenzie Trail was not accepted by the city of Piedmont as a public street because it was not constructed per the approved plans. And that city engineer will be providing and city attorney will be providing a further report on what happened and corrective action.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kevin votes aye. John?
Aye.
Austin?
No.
Item B. Discussion, possible action on development impact fees. I request now a motion to open a public hearing on this.
So moved?
Second.
Austin? Public hearing? John?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, we'll open a public hearing. I'd like to hear from Katie Cornman.
Good evening. I'm Katie Cornman. I live at 73 Apache. And when I saw this item pop up on the agenda, I just wanted to speak as a Realtor. My husband's a home builder. I think the city council considering adding an impact fee on our building permits or something like that is a wonderful idea. And we've seen the city of Oklahoma City do major increases this year with the parks and recreation fees. And it's not stopping us from building. And builders and home sale and real estate is the main industry. We're builders who are making money, including ourselves. And so, I think that's a right place for us to start looking at how we solve the road issues and get more funding for our roads and the impact that construction have on them until we get our commerce and things like that built up. So, I just wanted to speak in favor of that. I don't know what the council is actually saying about it tonight, but I just wanted to say that I was in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Mark Simpson?
Go ahead, just briefly. What I want to talk about is on that impact fee. At one time, it was $2,500. And then you guys lowered it to $750 a year. Now, it's been four or five years, but say if we built 60 houses a year, $1750, that'd be over 100 grand, okay? And then you're doing Mustang Road here, 104th from 178 to 164. That would go on here, pay for the payments. And Oklahoma City, right now, is at $6,000. You know, and we should sometime go to that. Because we're 150 of the Piedmont Road south of Oklahoma City. You know, we have to have that money. You know, here, the previous city manager wanted us to buy in a fee for roads, a $20 fee per month on our work. Well, that's outside. You know, we're back from bonding right now at the school. We'll be that way from now on because we're a growing community. We're one of the biggest growing communities in the United States, right here, in Hagan County, in Piedmont. You guys, even look yourselves in the mirror. You're the ones that this town's going to keep growing unless, you know, economy drops, put outside. I think you need to consider that tonight, not table. At least go to four or five grand and then escalate it up to 6,000 over the next four, five years. Because you need this blood, ourselves, to actually place that on the government.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
A motion to close public hearing on this?
Move to close public hearing?
Second. Melissa?
Um...
Is it somebody?
It's a vote.
I know.
Oh.
I'm... I had made up my mind, and now I'm reconsidering.
We're just going to have a public hearing.
We're just closing the public hearing on this one.
Oh, aye. Sorry. Thought we were voting on the actual thing.
No, 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 no. No, we have to discuss it.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin votes aye. Okay. Okay, discussion. John Isie?
Yeah. I mean, I'm glad to hear that there's public support from home builders. I appreciate that. I think we need to get something on the books as soon as possible. And I'm not prepared tonight to lay out a number. We can discuss numbers, but my intention was to get this on the agenda so we can ask the staff to research it for us and bring something back to us in the February meeting. And I want to take action on it in February. One question I did have was, do we know what the actual transportation impact fee is currently?
In Piedmont?
In Piedmont, yes.
Nothing?
Do we have one at all?
No.
None? Okay. All right. Because I was reading the subdivision regulations that talked about it and about putting it in a separate account for capital improvements, but I just wasn't sure if we're actually collecting anything. So, not nothing. Okay.
There's no... There's nothing in the Piedmont subdivision regulations. Oklahoma City has it, and they charge by the square foot of the house.
I personally have always been in favor of development paying for development, especially the development impacts. I think that's one reason why the fee on the existing water bill was, I think that's one reason why the fee on the existing water bill was, amongst many other reasons, why it was shot down, because that's making existing citizens pay for the development, not the developers, the new developers, to pay for the development, you know? I've had similar conversations with the town of Arcadia and town of Luther because they are beginning to grow and feeling, you know, major growing pains and they don't have the money to open roads and rights of way and rebuild roads and, and do things like that. Roughly, you know, it costs about, you know, 500, 600,000 dollars a mile to build a road. That works out to maybe, you know, 50 bucks a millennial foot, you know, for, for each lot, you know, that is built, 100 dollars, you know, for each side, or for the, for both sides cumulatively. We definitely have to do something. We need to act quickly and honestly, I'd, I'd have no problem saying right here, right now, every building permit issued would be an additional $2,500. You know? And, and just to get something started until we can revise it. That's my position, my opinion on it. I'm in favor of putting, putting forth some development impact fees.
Maybe for a transportation?
Yes.
Development impact fee?
Yep, because roads at a minimum is our biggest problem and then when we get into the PMA, we'll talk about the water system.
Sure. Mr. Roth, do you have any experience with these types of fees?
I do, but you know what, obviously I need to be more research.
Sure.
So welcome thought of giving us till February meeting.
I agree.
Allow us to research it properly.
Okay. All right. But I guess my, I'd just like to say that I would like to do something, take action on it in February. So I understand maybe that only gives you a month, but I'm sorry to put you under the gun.
You know, I was in Florida for five years and back then it was at least $10,000 on a house concrete and broke ground with impact fees, library impact fee, street impact fee, all kinds of recreation impact fees. So it was costly. Now, the unfortunate thing with the development side, some of the builders weren't happy with that because of the issue of that was taking money that they would, that the person would put extras into a house. So there's, there's a balancing act there, but I'll sure, we'll share as a staff research and have that information to the council for their consideration.
Because that was my concern was, would people still wanna build out here if it's too high, so?
Well, this is an issue, especially and I'm sure can't speak for the building community, but there is a point in which you get it so high that people aren't gonna be putting extras into the house and that's sometimes.
Especially with the way inflation has taken on these last couple of months.
So, but I mean, our, our objective here would be staff to present information to you and some options. And then also.
Well, let it, and, and when the fees go up and when the cost of homes go up and their materials and everything, you know, usually what has to give in the end is the ground which it's built on. So, so maybe ground won't sell for, you know, 100,000 dollars for a one acre lot, you know, it's gonna have to sell for, you know, 60,000 dollars a one acre lot because of all the other fees, they gotta make the full equation work. So something's gotta give.
Yeah, I mean, you think about every house that's built, how many concrete trucks go there? How many, the drywall, the lumber, the windows, the doors, you know, all the other things that go, how many deliveries is made? I mean, that does have an impact on your existing streets, especially when you're building, you know, 100 homes or more, I mean, it's.
There's no doubt about it and we, we need the money to.
Right.
Improvements that people are asking for, so that's sure an alternative.
Okay.
We'll provide that.
I got a motion to have the staff look at this and come back with a.
Yeah, I move that city staff research development impact, transportation impact fees and bring a recommendation back to the city council at the regularly scheduled February meeting for our consideration.
Second. Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. Discussion, possible action on keeping chickens within the city of Piedmont. John Isie?
Yeah, the mayor brought this up. There's been a, he, he received a complaint from someone who had received formal notice, code violation. And basically the issue is, is the chicken ordinance says chickens shall not be kept in, it restricts front and side yards. And I totally agree with the front yard. I don't think we should be, I don't think anyone really wants to see chicken coops in front yards, but the side yard, he, his thought was that that was too restrictive and I'm inclined to agree, especially in the, this specific case of the individual has a five acre lot, zoned RE, and they did build it on the side of their house, but it is a very nice chicken coop, as far as chicken coops go, I mean. And so I did a little research and the city of Edmund, their requirements are actually, actually must, much less strict than the city of Piedmont. And let's see here, so they actually allow chickens on lots as small as one-third of an acre or 14,250 square feet. They allow two to four laying hens. And they say to obtain a permit, the location of the coop must have a 40-foot setback to the dwelling structures of all neighboring properties. So that's the only setback requirement for them. So I also think that we should look at lowering the restriction. Currently this ordinance restricts to lots, one acre and above, only allow chickens. I really think we should look at lowering that to half an acre and removing the side yard restriction. And we actually do have a, it says 10 feet from any property line and not less than 50 feet from any neighboring residence or street. So.
Is there nothing about the distance from the neighbors in our existing ordinance?
It does, it does say, not less than 50 feet from any neighboring residence or street in the existing ordinance.
That's already in ours.
Correct.
Okay.
And 10 feet off the property line.
So that's a little bit, that's a little bit contrary to saying not in a side yard. You could be in a side yard and more than 50 feet from a neighboring residence. So which one, that's why I think it, it's better to take out the side yard. I, I agree with you, you know, and, and that the side yard restriction should probably be removed and just stick with the distance measurement.
Yeah, especially when you have a big, you know, a large, you got five acres, I mean, a side yard, it could be 200 feet from your side of your house to the property line.
It very well could be.
That's, that's kind of ambiguous.
Yes, it is. Also in, in the ordinance, I don't know if, if others, you know, read this, you know, our ordinance is really should be simple to enforce and it shouldn't contain language that would be virtually impossible to enforce. And in item, you know, A, V, you know, number five, all areas where chickens are kept shall be cleaned daily. We're not enforcing that, so let's take that out, you know? I mean, how about this? Just clean. You know, I mean, whatever, I mean, that, that, at least that kinda keeps the essence of if someone's got, you know, a four-foot pile of chicken manure and shavings, you know, in their backyard and, and it's swarmed by, you know, a million flies, you know, that, that could be a nuisance and, and I think that's the intent, you know, of that language, but make, make it simple. That'd be my recommendation, so. If you don't have anything else, I'd just move to send this back to planning commission for some revisions.
Do we have to send it back to planning commission?
No. Go, go to staff and then directly back to the council? Anybody?
Mr. Redd.
Sounds good to me.
Or staff could just bring, bring forth a revised one next meeting if they hopefully have time to do that.
Get a motion to, to direct staff to look at the chicken ordinance and make some, possibly make some changes that I think is warranted and bring it back to the council.
Do you wanna be specific?
Yeah.
Do you wanna be more specific about that? Like remove the side yard and go with the?
I think.
I would.
Go ahead, somebody else say that.
Okay. I move that city staff bring back a revised ordinance number 626, striking the side yard of paragraph A1 and then also paragraph A5 revising the language that says that to all areas shall be, where chickens are kept shall be clean instead of cleaned daily.
Is that right?
Yes.
Would it be all right just to take the word daily out of there?
Yeah.
Leave it so that no accumulation?
Yes. Okay. Let me restate my motion, sorry Ariel, sorry. I move that city staff revise ordinance number 626 and bring it back to the next, the February city council meeting with the following changes. Paragraph A1, please remove side yard. Paragraph A5, please remove daily.
Austin?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Ron?
Friendly amendment? How do you do that? Because you talked about making smaller lots, you forgot that part.
You can make another motion.
No. We got the motion without that.
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin says aye.
All right, I move that city staff revise ordinance number 626 to.
Also include?
Uh, lower the minimum lot size to half an acre and bring that back to consideration at the February meeting of the city council.
Second. Any other discussion on that? Kevin votes no. John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Um, we worked really hard on this chicken. And we dealt with a lot of angry rooster owners. And the, the main issue was having them within the city limits. And the main issue was the roosters. So, half acre lots, I'm not as familiar with the neighborhoods as perhaps you are. So like what size lot is your house on? Is it like?
Point of order. Yeah, I'm on three quarter, but point of order, we have a, we're taking a vote.
Ask them for a vote.
Right. Well, I'm trying to get some clarification.
Okay. Half acre lot? Yes or no?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, okay, so the motion passed, so we directed staff to look at rewriting the ordinance to change it to half an acre and then bring that back to the council next month.
Yeah, along with the other previous.
No.
I mean, I'm open, I'm open to have more discussion with Melissa on this item if you want to.
Okay.
It's already passed though.
Melissa, do you need more, more discussion on this item?
I was just trying to let her know that there's still like, the rooster part hasn't changed.
Well, I'm not even worried about that. My, my whole thing is I dealt with a lot of angry in-town citizens and I'm trying to get a feel for like, because I know that you're in a neighborhood, I'm not in a neighborhood. I'm out in the country, so whatever I want.
Well, I will say, the HOAs can, can, can override the ordinance with their, with their rules and restrictions.
Yeah. And if you have more than five acres, you can have as many roosters as you want.
Because like you're on what, a half an acre in windmill?
Less than.
Less than a half an acre?
Yeah, okay, well, you have a month to think about it, it'll come back next month.
We can talk about it next month with the new ordinance.
Moving on.
Here we go.
Item D, discussion, possible action on ordinance amending, so ordinance of Piedmont by rezoning 5580 Mustang Road from A1 to RE, and I'd like a motion to open a public hearing on this.
So moved.
Second. Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Anyone like to speak on this? Mark?
I think that we, we need to hold the director of law to make some comments.
Okay.
Either way.
No, let's, okay, close the public hearing.
Motion, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
This is a, this is gonna be an ordinance to rezone from an A1 lot, which is a five acre lot, about halfway between Ash and Apache on Mustang Road. They're taking a lot. It's been approved by, by the planning commission to split the lot into two half acre lots. That's why they're asking for the REs. The REs are.
That's two and a half acre lots, yeah, okay.
Two, two and a half acre lots. So they.
Any council members on this? Do we get a motion on it?
I have, make a motion to approve item B.
Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Okay.
Is this a second? Is this, this is? Not this time, right? Okay. Okay, item E, discussion, possible action identifying potential streets designate as truck route within the corporate limits. Scott? This is, on the screen here in here, I've got a picture of one of our, our oil, has offered this map, red dots are oil well, the white signs are actually, are the, the colored star, the lines are getting more, your routes and stuff, they're different colors, they don't mean anything, they're just, I don't know which, which one you can see better. The dash line is the, is Piedmont city limits, so that kinda helps there. Staff's recommendation is to look at Frisco Road as a truck route. It's through, there's only a few places that it does not, you know, I don't know if you can see here, but this here is not Piedmont city limits, it's, it's there. Bridge line kinda breaks here and the truck's not, there's a bridge out there that's not ready for the, for it, so, and it doesn't go through, it's got too many curves for these trucks to make turn. Cimarron is more outside the limits of the generated. So Frisco Road is one that we recommend. We also recommend Morgan Road on the east side. This is less residential areas as opposed to Mustang Road on the center. And it's only three miles from our city. And then the last one that we will, we'll recommend as an alternative will be Piedmont.
So Frisco, Morgan, and Piedmont Road possibly.
And this would allow them to, so while making oil routes, it would go straight up and then over to those right there.
Is, is this just for routes for trucks going inside the city?
So through the, Frisco.
We have a truck ordinance that bans through trucks, so we'd have, I mean, the whole point was we don't want trucks driving through town.
To the city.
This would be, we'd have to amend that ordinance?
We would have to.
Or, yeah.
To make sure that that, to just prevent these trucks from hopping.
Well, I, I can tell you right now, I'm, I would be against making Piedmont Road a trucker out. I've already had people complain about it to me because we're not enforcing the through truck route right now, the no through truck route. Morgan Road, we just spent money to re-chip and sell that and then we're gonna put a bunch of oil tankers who probably, who may or may not be legal weights running on that, that's, I think that's the height of irresponsibility by the city to do something like that, I'm sorry, but that, there's no way we should do that. I don't, Frisco seems to be a reasonable, it's not even, it's not paved, it's a gravel road or dirt road. I don't know if you can get down all of Frisco for all those miles.
No.
So, I mean, what? But I just, I just worry about, Morgan, I think that's gonna get torn up and that's just, does it seem like a good idea? Piedmont Road, we already fought that battle once. Piedmont Road, we already fought that battle once before, um.
The reason we want this, was suggested was there are mobile trucks
Right.
that utilize the interstate, and it was the way I listened, it was the way I'm stationed.
Right.
If we had a third option, that would be direction.
So, but who's, I guess, is someone asking for a through truck route through town? Okay, I just, I was just curious, I didn't know.
Well, I, I think what came up, was it in combination with the Jake brakes and designate, you know, truck route and then, or, you know, and I, I think, I know I remember saying something along the lines of, well, it might be easier to identify, um, where you shouldn't drive rather than, or, or where you should drive rather than what you shouldn't. And actually, you know, I mean, I live on Piedmont Road, I know that the section, you know, that was designed, was designed with additional asphalt thickness because of the trucks. Out of all the roads in Piedmont, the base, even though Piedmont Road's starting to show some surface wear and some, some problems, it's because the asphalt's a little too thin and it's stressing out the base. It, it has the best base in all the city, you know, um, out of, out of all the other roads. I think Morgan Road and some of the other roads, you know, out there have been doing pretty good for, you know, a chip seal road. You're asking awful lot, you know, of basically some duct tape to, uh, manage all the trucks, you know, on, on the road base. You know, with that said, whatever we're doing for these people that are collecting, you know, the, the saltwater mainly, it's the saltwater trucks that go north up to the disposal plant up on Reading Road, um, they need to take the most direct route to get there. The reason why I like to go up Piedmont Road is because you've got four miles with no stop signs. You know, if you want to stop those trucks from going up there, put a four-way stop at every intersection. But I'm not for that.
We know how you feel about stop signs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We're gonna put roundabouts, right?
Yeah. I'm all about that, I betcha.
Okay, okay, on this item, can we kill this?
I don't know.
I mean, I guess, I have one more question. I do see Mustang is green route, so that's, I'm assuming that's?
What's that?
It is currently a truck route, yeah.
It does not jog over there.
That would be impressive.
Yeah, those two roads don't connect.
I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be against having them come, uh, for in-town, uh, services to come up Piedmont Road and then branch off on the east-west roads, so they don't come up Mustang Road.
Doesn't each well site have its own truck route already?
Okay, so this, these aren't the, are these the truck routes that came from, from the?
Yes, they gave me this, it shows that this is a truck route that they utilize. And so this is only one company that
Right.
that is, it's on actual, it was a good, if you look Piedmont Road is utilized, Frisco Road is really utilized, I know since I've been here, to try and push them, try and out some actually.
Right.
To kind of lessen the weight of the, and that's where you see, uh, coming up.
Came up here, went across, went back, went across, something like that. Because we just did some work on, up here, and I don't really want trucks going up that and destroying that, I mean.
A current practice, a current process is we do not allow through trucks. Trucks going to designated well sites within the city, they have a route that they take.
Right.
Anybody who comes with business in the city takes the most direct route to that business and the most direct route out. We do not need an additional ordinance. Can we, do we need a motion to get rid of this?
I think it was more the issue of identifying if you wanted to proceed, so if you take no action.
I move we do not want to proceed with designated truck routes other than what we already got.
Second.
Austin?
Aye.
John?
No.
Ron?
No.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. Discussion possible action on ordinance prohibiting use of compression release engine braking within the corporate limits. Before we talk about it, I'd like to open a public hearing on that. Will we open a public hearing?
Move we open a public hearing?
Second.
Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Kevin, aye, okay. Anyone like to speak on compression braking systems? Okay, close the public hearing. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Does, okay, how about we hear from the attorney, Mike Sigler?
I think we're gonna have the police.
The chief of police, okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmember, this is a ordinance which has been improperly awarded under jurisdiction. Thank you, thank you, Senator, and Councilmember Brad Dale, he was correct identifying it as the use of compression brakes, it's a device that goes on an engine that they use to pressure from the internals of the engine in order to stop the brakes. They are quite loud, there's smoke, they make a lot of pollution, and the, the purpose of them is to stop the truck, a heavily loaded truck, quickly. One of the things that we're looking at is that with the use of these, we've had, we've had some complaints as far as the noise and the pollution, but also we're saying that they're closing or apparently approaching stop signs in areas where they're not able to both stop, applying the compression brake to stop it, stop instead of using their mechanical brakes. That being a problem with us, and as to our ears, the noise and so forth, so our option is to, is to leave cities have, to enact more mental forgiveness, the use of Jake brakes, Jacob brakes, whatever you choose to call them, that they are in fact compression release engine brakes. Thank you.
Okay.
But they are in fact compression release brakes, and with those, it requires that only in the accident and emergency or failure, they're not used Jake brakes within the city limits of Piedmont. Very quick.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Chief Speaker.
Thank you, sir.
It was Bob Link who lives in Windmill Park, a Piedmont resident, discussed this with me and sent me straight on what to call it and what the actual use was for. Does the council have any discussion on this? Okay, there's a, there is a ordinance in the packet, right? Can we get a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin votes aye, good, okay. Item G, discussion possible action on a reinforced concrete box at Edmund Road and Mustang Road involving the Mustang Road construction project. This item was brought on here by Jason Brenly, our engineer on the Mustang project, he's not here tonight?
He isn't, he, uh, Mayor Proton, a member of the city council, he has COVID and advised me of such here recently, so he wasn't able to come to the meeting this evening. This is an item that relates to our upcoming project on Mustang Road. He has given three drawings on page one eighty-seven, with three different options to improve this reinforced concrete box. One alternative is, is the preferred, just from a cost standpoint, is thirty-three thousand dollars. The second option is forty-four thousand dollars, a little larger box, and then the third is for a concrete pipe to be installed for approximately fifty thousand. These are all estimates that Mr. Brenly made. Obviously, if the council chooses one of the options, then we'd have to get a change order and bring it back from the contractor to the council for approval. So, I'm not being an engineer, I'm having two engineers on the city council, I prefer to their expertise as to which option they recommend. Mr. Brenly recommended the first option, which is a lower cost, strictly on the cost basis, but he did point out that there was a curfew that maybe it concerned the council or.
Does anybody have any discussion on this?
I, I have a little bit. So, just the estimated cost by Mr. Brenly, obviously you'd have to negotiate the actual price of the change order with the contractor. So typically when you do something like that, that, it's something that's not in the contract, you're gonna pay more than you normally would if you were just to bid the work out, if, since you're adding something in after the fact. Mr. Roth sent me, I inquired about how he came up with this cost estimate, and Mr. Roth forwarded me an email from Mr. Brenly. And in the email at the end, uh, Mr. Brenly noted that there's AT&T phone line on both sides of the existing box culvert, I think there's one across, it crosses Edmund Road, twenty feet to the west and twenty feet to the east, or fifteen feet to the east. And he said, I really think AT&T will prevent any work from being done, in my experience they need months just to provide depths, and are usually located just below the surface. So, even if we approve the work, it, it may, it may take a long time for them to get it done because AT&T will have to relocate their phone lines, um, and they may be done with the rest of the project before they even get to move the phone lines out of the way, so.
I have a couple, I have a couple comments if you
Go ahead.
As well, okay. And council, if you notice, if you look at the drawing, the three drawings there, um, the, the greenish one, uh, you know, actually has, that's the one with the existing box culvert, so if you were to connect the road there, you'll notice how that existing box culvert is generally right underneath those overhead power lines. And then the two new alternatives are, you know, pushing that box culvert a little bit to the north, you know, closer to Edmund Road. They, I think, I think all these options shown, you know, have, have their challenges, and it's not something that we should probably entertain at this time. Because the existing box is set so far off Edmund Road, um, it is rather short, um, but I think if the grade is lowered as it comes up to that existing box, um, it'll function just like it's currently functioning, and it really, you know, isn't that significant of a problem. We do have the opportunity in the future, uh, to one, acquire right-of-way when land develops, you know, through development requirements to get the corner clips, to get the extra seventeen feet of right-of-way, you know, in addition to the standards, you know, statutory right-of-way of thirty-three. And then we've got some room to move some utilities, uh, when development occurs with more traffic, maybe at that time, if there's a left turn lane put in there or something, we can have a better design, we can get utilities out of the way, we can rip out the existing box and put something new and grade those, uh, grade those ditch lines in there. I'm afraid if we do any of those, any, any one of these three options, we're gonna be turning it out, you know, in, in ten years. Who else? With that, I'd like to make a motion that we leave the intersection and existing structure as it is and move forward with, uh, building the road, you know, as designed.
Second.
Austin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Ron?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Item H, discussion possible action on proposed agreement for construction, management, and inspection for the Mustang Road project, Smith Roberts Baldischweiler LLC.
Mayor Proton, if I can just inject there and speak on behalf of Mr. Brenly again, maybe he'll have better luck this time. This item is for inspection, construction, management, inspection services during the construction of the Mustang Road reconstruction project. Total cost estimated at, by the contract, or by this entity is fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty dollars cents for the entire project, of which approximately seven thousand and, seven thousand? Numbers here, seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, it's testing.
Yeah.
That's my benchmark. I recommend this, that this effort be approved by the council, obviously we want to have a product that we're paying for, and the construction management of that during the process as well, we're coming to extend that. Administration recommends it longer, Mr. Brenly, and I would hope that the council will go along with that as well.
Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I agree, we need to make sure that we're getting what we paid for, and we want to get a quality product, so this is a way to help ensure that happens.
I get a motion?
Um, I have one item, I'd, I'd like to, um, ask that the city manager, um, discuss with Smith Roberts Baldischweiler, um, the necessity of those survey items with regards to cross-sectioning before and after. The project had already been surveyed, we already do have existing cross-sections because we have a full-blown topo map for that drawing. The total amount's about six thousand dollars. If it's not really necessary, I mean, the earthwork items are listed, uh, in the plans, and there really shouldn't be any changes necessary, you know, that would warrant, you know, cross-sectioning before and after because it's not like a fill or borrow pit that they're trying to measure from cross-sections, it's, it's a, uh, DTM design agreed upon earthwork volume. Yeah, so, that'd be great, I, I'm, I'm all for it, um, I just discussed the necessity of that item. Also, one other question, can you ask me this, uh, Mr. Roth? Something that caught my eye here, just as I looked at this, the budget and amount on your agenda report sheet, that dollar amount, is that a carryover from something one million two hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and thirteen fifty-five?
I'd have to defer to shift.
Oh. Because I thought the, the, the bid amount was?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and change or something?
Yeah, what, uh, what, what are you looking at?
It may be.
Right up here, uh, are you on?
Page one.
Page one eighty-eight.
Right here. Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, this is a new forum, so we're picking up new things as we go along here, but.
It may be the account number, it may be the lobby, it's in the account.
Oh. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, 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 so.
Got you, that's what we got left.
Okay.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the proposed agreement?
Move that we approve the proposed agreement with Smith Roberts Baldischweiler for Mustang Road reconstruction.
Second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Discussion possible action on establishing a public works building committee, Mark?
Mayor Proton, a member of the city council, what you have before you this evening is the establishment of a public works facility building committee, which Mayor Proton just mentioned, consisting of five members. The idea being that the, this building committee would be working to assist in putting together the ideas as to the building of our public works facility. As you know, we budget one point three million dollars a year. This effort will, this
This effort will, this committee will be involved from inception through the progress of the construction, and ultimately will then recommend back to the full body the, hopefully, the approval of the facility, meeting the various criteria. And it's somewhat laid out in terms of the process. There's a lot of involvement by the committee in the project, and then, at the same time, actions that the committee would, would take would all be recommended to the full body for consideration, governing body, rather, for consideration. And I guess the most important thing is to talk about who might be on the committee. Obviously, the mayor would be one member of the committee. One additional councilman would also be on the committee, at least that's what's being recommended. One member would be one citizen with building trades, construction management, or, and/or architectural knowledge would also hopefully be on the committee. And these are all, be all, some of these people would be obviously appointed by the mayor and recommended to the council. And the manager or his designee, and also one citizen at large. So we have some accountability for, from the citizens having some accountability as to how the money is being spent. And hopefully, that person would have some knowledge of commercial building as well. But the idea is to involve council staff and citizen chief as well to help get this project going through its initial phases all the way through to completion. And we're hoping that we'll get support from the city council on this. The other, I may mention, the public works director and the finance director would also be staff resources to the committee, obviously, from a financial standpoint or the public works, primarily because that's their facility that have input into, you know, working with the committee on that as well.
Mark, who is number four? Your man, good, you say manager?
Number, number, the first would be the mayor. The second would be a, a member of the city council. The third would be the city manager, or a manager, rather, or his designee. The fourth would be an individual that the mayor would suggest who might have experience with building trades, construction management, and/or architecture, and one citizen at large.
How would the citizen at large be chosen?
That would be up to the mayor. I can't speak for him.
But you've got the mayor choosing number four there.
He's choo, he's, he's choosing the committee. It's the, it's the mayor's committee.
Okay.
And the idea being to pull as many knowledgeable people as, as, as possible can into a committee without making the committee so large that it's non-functional. And, and to begin the whole process of the development of that building all the way through completion. But every step that would require council action would be, any suggestions by the committee would be brought before the council for full action by all of the council members.
I think this is a really good plan.
I, I really do, too. All of your points, building committee charge, you know, items one through ten. I, I really think this is, this is great. I think it's necessary. I really think that this process will deliver not only what city staff needs, and they really do need this, but it'll also be a benefit to all the citizens, you know, in the town to get this, to get this up and running and done. Even, you know, with one point three million dollars, you know, I also envision a benefit for, you know, our city police and, and fire having the availability to hopefully have fuel service, you know, at this location. You know, a facility that has emergency power backup, so on and so forth. And with that said, I would really, to the council, would like to represent you. And I, I hope that you would, you know, also, you know, vote for me or choose for me to do this because this is also right up the, the line of my, you know, professional career and my, and my daily job, so.
Be happy to pass that along to the mayor.
Thank you.
So we approve, if we approve this, it's up to the mayor to select the committee members.
That's correct.
And I, and I do want to make one comment, too. The, the citizen at large, we want somebody from the, the citizens of the community to also be involved in this process so that they can go back to the citizens and say that it's non-compete and family property.
Exactly. And, and one thing, just, one thing that the public should also need to know is, I think people who, who do serve, you know, on this committee, you know, would, would likely not be able to probably, you know, bid on the work if the, if the work were to come out because it kind of gives them a little bit of an inside edge, you know. It could probably violate, you know, the, you know, non-compete clauses and, and disclosure clauses and things like that, so.
Could I have a motion on this?
Motion to, for you, item I.
Second that motion.
Okay. Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Ron.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Discussion of possible action on request for qualifications for city attorney services. John.
I'll let the city manager speak first on this.
The mayor asked that I put together a request for qualifications for city attorney services, which will allow the city council to take in proposals for this service and including the city attorney should be, or his firm decide to also apply. And the idea being that he wanted the full council to have the opportunity to see various, either individuals or firms as to what they might be able to offer the city. And it's not to replace the city attorney at this point in time. It's merely to solicit proposals and to bring those back to the city council for consideration. And that's what I've done. The request for qualifications, I actually, most of it, except for changing the words Piedmont, a community in Granbury, Texas, which went through the similar process. And it was, it was well-privileged qualifications. The team requested considerable amount of information, even including any conflicts by previous clients with regards to the city. So this is more of an effort to solicit and to see whether the city attorney services that are being offered by other firms would, would offer anything for the city.
John, do you have comments on this?
No, I mean, I think this is a good idea. I, I support it.
Anybody else have comments? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we have the RFQ for city attorney services published and advertised and brought back at a future meeting.
Second that motion.
Councilwoman Ashford.
No.
Councilman Cardwell.
Yes.
Councilman Heisey.
Yes.
Councilman Reedus.
No.
Councilman Blaisdell?
No.
Discussion of possible action on boards and committees. The mayor has requested that we appoint Even Sprinkle to the library committee. Can I get a motion to do that?
I move.
I'll second it. Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay. There's no new business tonight, so I would like to get a motion to recess the council meeting and convene as the Piedmont Municipal Authority.
I move.
May I second?
Second.
Melissa.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Kevin. Aye. John.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call PMA to order. We have a quorum. Go ahead with the roll call.
Trustee Kurt Mayow. Trustee Ken Blaisdell.
Here.
Trustee John Heisey.
Present.
Trustee Austin Reade. Trustee Mark Cardwell.
Here.
Here.
Does anyone have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
I do not.
I'd like to pull item D, please.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to approve items A, C, and D from the consent agenda?
I move.
I'm sorry, Austin, did you have a...
Did you pull B or D?
D.
D.
Yes, sir.
And what did you just say?
I said, you said B, right?
I said D.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, I thought you said B.
D is in dog.
Okay, I'll rephrase that. Items A, B, and C from the consent agenda.
I move.
Second. Melissa.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Kevin, aye. John.
Aye.
Austin. Okay, item D, John.
Yeah. Why are we under a consent order?
Obviously, it was prior to my...
Sure, I, I'm not blaming you. I'm just asking the question.
No, I understand. We do have certain improvements that we need to be making at the room. And we were given a consent order. It was supposed to be completed by December one. When I arrived on November fifteenth, I wrote a letter to DEQ asking for authority to extend that date to May first. And this letter, which we have before you on the agenda, is DEQ's granting our request to extend it to May one. The public works director is in the process of putting together a RFB or Q, or whatever you want to call it. And so that we can get some work completed by May one. Now, he has done some work already on there, but there are certain amount of work that has to be done by, by party.
Sure. And we're gonna, are we gonna bid those services out?
Yes, sir.
So the, so the, when did we originally receive the consent order?
I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say it was October.
Okay.
And when I came on board in November, I was advised that we were supposed to comply and finish the endeavor by the first of December. And that's when I got concerned because there was a thirty thousand dollar penalty of the city to finish the job by December first.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we have any idea what the budgeted amount to make these repairs are? Ballpark range? Are we talking five figures, six figures?
I, we can get you that information.
I mean...
And the public works director. And one of the engineers I was working with, he estimated roughly around fifty grand. Now, don't quote me on that.
No, 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 no.
Relation he gave. I'm working with somebody else now, and somebody must figure it out for me.
Fair enough.
Any other questions?
Hopefully, under a hundred. Okay. I move that we accept and place this addendum A to the consent order on file and that we get this advertised and done before the date stated as of May first, 2022.
Second.
Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Kevin, aye. Okay, moving on to business items. Discussion of possible action on PMA water service connection to Gordon's Hollow subdivision. John.
Sure. So we discussed this at the last meeting. Just a little bit of a refresher. There is a developer who's building a subdivision outside of the city of Piedmont who requested connection to the PMA water system in January of 2019. That request was denied because there was not adequate pressure to serve his development of thirty, of the timings proposing thirty-one connections. In the meantime, he decided to drill some wells, and apparently that was, was not successful. He came back to the city manager, and the city manager and the public works director and the developer worked out some sort of a deal where they gave him a two-inch meter. He was also building a house for the public works director at the time. Then, um... So, obviously, the city manager violated the resolution that we discussed last time about homes outside the city limits built after January one, 2000. I won't go into all those details, but Crabtree Homes also violated the PMA resolution because they did not apply for a connection as they did in, in 2019. They knew what the proper procedure was, and they didn't follow it. So, Mr. Cardwell and myself and the city manager met with the city engineer this afternoon, and we discussed this. Was also informed that apparently the developer is essentially putting in his own water system. So essentially, what's going on is we have an outside water system that's connecting to the Piedmont Municipal Authority water system. And I don't believe we ever granted any authorities, we never granted any permission for anything like that. So I think what needs to be done is the PMA needs to enter into agreement with the developer for bulk water sales to his water system. And with the understanding that we're not responsible for any pressure problems that he may have as a result of him connecting to our service, and he's going to pay bulk water rates. And we're going to sell him water, just like, in a similar way that Oklahoma City sells, the city, the PMA water. So that's my, my summary and my recommendation.
And, and I believe in addition to that, the two-inch meter where, and I think it's right there on Richland Road, you know, at the entrance to the subdivision. You know, at the meter is where our responsibility ends for, for the water system. Anything inside the property is not our responsibility whatsoever. As part of that agreement, it should also be noted that, you know, we are not responsible for any little pressure water issues or anything in that area.
Did you say treatment facility?
Water system.
Water system.
Yeah, it's not clear exactly what, what it is, but my understanding is once you exceed a certain number of connections, you've essentially become your own water system.
Yeah, and, and he has to get his own DEQ approvals for doing that and, and whatever, whatever.
They've got, currently was a nine eleven, nine, ten, eleven houses there. With seventeen more coming up, right?
I think a total of twenty-five is, is twenty-six, including the existing house.
That was there originally.
Let's try to wrap my head around this.
Yeah, I mean...
Are we going to find out real quick how ticked off he's going to be?
Maybe.
Well, he, you know...
I agree with what you're saying.
There's a, there's a lot that I, there's a lot, there's a lot that I would like to say. You know, when, when you don't do things the right way, this is what happens. And he knew that thirty-one gallons a minute was not going to have, you know, adequate pressures out there. And it, the only saving grace is, is this is in a separate zone because it's out to the west, and it doesn't have as much problems as the town zone does here east of Cemetery Road. You know, because it's in a separate pressure zone on a separate, you know, water tank, so. But what should have been done, if you, you know, I mean, it could have just been totally upright. Hey, guess what? This guy wants a two-inch meter, and let's wholesale water him, and he takes care of his system and his pressures. If he wants to put it in a tank and booster pump everything and be his own water purveyor, more power to you, you know, I mean, it's kind of... But it wasn't done that way. And so now we have to develop an agreement to correct those, you know, to correct those things.
Of the new home being built. For a property that is in their urban area, but not in their core area, their charge is thirty-one cents per square foot.
Thirty-one cents per square foot.
That would be for a home or a subdivision of three hundred homes of from two thousand square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet each, would generate an impact fee of two hundred thousand dollars.
That's for street and parks, you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yukon and Edmund do not have impact fees. They're like us, they don't have any.
So I'd direct the city manager to look into what is a comparable fee and bring it back?
Yes.
Yeah, and in addition to that, you know, when developments do go in, you know, and I know in the Deer Creek Water Corporation, just to our east, that withdraws water from the Garber Wellington, same place where we withdraw it. A subdivision that were, that was, you know, if a subdivision was going and put in a hundred, two hundred, you know, homes on a quarter section, they're going to require two, three, four water wells at, at four hundred thousand apiece. They're going to require one to two miles of water line upgrades. And sometimes people, sometimes it gets built, sometimes it doesn't. But we have to start requiring, you know, if, if they're, if they're out there trying to pull water from a six-inch water line, it needs to be a twelve-inch water line or a ten-inch water line, whatever our city engineer, you know, you know, defines that it needs to be. So we have to start getting our water lines upsized and developers have to, you know, help, help us get there. You want to make your motion? I thought you were starting.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'd move that impact fees for our water system be evaluated to see what, you know, so that we can discuss it at a further meeting. And I would hope that they would have significant numbers, you know, for us to, you know, consider and what projected revenue, you know, might be.
I would also like to have that by next meeting.
By next meeting, if possible. If not, the meeting after that.
Second to that motion.
Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Discussion of possible action on general lease and settlement agreement between Larchmont Farms LLC and Piedmont Municipal Authority. Do we have an attorney from O'Mag here on this deal?
I talked to Mr. Jones today. He wasn't able to be here this evening, but he did give me some information on this issue of the city attorney. It feels like. The, this agreement settles a lawsuit which was brought by Larchmont Farms against the city. It really results back to the seventies when initially we put a water line in on that property later on in the eighties, from what I understand. In the discussions that the attorney had with the opposing counsel, there was a storm and exposed the line. And then there was, the line was exposed to the property owner at the time, left it for about fifteen years. Property then changed hands. A new owner came in and started looking at the entire property and determined that the water line was not in the best position in relation to his property. And he brought suit against the city to resolve that issue. The, I'm not fully.
Apparently the water line wasn't even the easement.
Well, that's what I was going to say. But the, and I, my learning counsel here has indicated that, that the easement, the water line is not in the appropriate easement, that because at the time the water line was put in, boring, was very expensive. Most larger cities weren't even doing it, much less smaller communities. And so because the line was exposed and needed to be reformed, the, that brought about this whole issue of the lawsuit. During the lawsuit, the public works department, the public works director at the time, not anybody associated with the current administration, decided that the line needed to be relocated. The line was relocated during the lawsuit, opened up other issues that possibly might have exposed the city to further claims. And for that reason, the need to settle this lawsuit even became more apparent. The proposal that you had before you this evening is really a five-fold process. One issue is, I'll kind of start from the back and work forward, is that the parties would agree to the new easement, which you have as attachment, or attachment aid, that is actually not in the original paperwork, but you have it under, under ES. That the city attorney will need to review prior to any execution if the, if the council approves this settlement. The second issue is that the farm LLC, or Larchmont Farm, will execute the agreement they indicated they would, the easement agreement. And if the agreement itself is approved, they will dismiss the charges after fourteen days with prejudice, meaning they won't be able to be brought back. And the two stipulations with regards to the city. One would be that within eighteen months of the agreement being signed by all parties, that the city would bury, bore and bury, bury the line in the new easement that's agreed upon in the document of the attachment. And also that we would give them a two hundred dollar credit on their water bill for the next seven years, two hundred dollars per month. The, they approximately, right now, I understand that they have a water bill of approximately four hundred dollars, or averaging around four hundred dollars a month. So we're not paying them money, we're just giving them a credit of their water usage. And that was scheduled to begin on February first, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'll turn to the city attorney if he has any other comments.
This agreement does contain a confidentiality agreement, which I know is one of the council members are reticent to, in or into. This one does contain the language that it's only to the extent authorized by law. I talked to Mr. Jones, he agreed, or he represented me, that he talked with this with a public worker and would be able to be accessed by a request under the Air Records Act. Because we are paying money, we're not paying money, but we're giving consideration to, to them. So it does have confidentiality agreement, but it is limited to the extent authorized by law. What other than that?
Do you think that, that we could just remove that and not have to bring into question for, you know, the extent authorized by law, what it really means to whichever party might be looking at it?
I was not privy to any of the conversations between Attorney Jones and Mr. Kirby's attorneys. I don't know whether that was a pivotal consideration or not.
Or is this possibly just some standard language from some kind of?
Arcade leftover.
Arcade leftover?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I don't, I don't see what's confidential, to be honest with you. I mean, I think everything's been made public here.
That was our attempt.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement and ask their attorney if they have any heartburn with the condition of, you know, removing item number five, just for transparency. And, and then we fulfill our end of the agreement.
Would be, if you don't mind, that this city authorizes into accepting the new easement, subject to my view on statute.
Yes, yeah, yeah, subject to the new easement, provided that it's correct and approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Melissa.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Item D. Discussion, possible action, application by Robert Francisco for three individual water taps at forty-four twenty Trails End Street. Mark?
This is a representative of the city council. What you have before you is a request, as indicated, for three taps at the location of forty-four twenty Trails End Street, northeast Piedmont. The, back in two thousand and two, when the initial moratorium was in the process of being adopted, the city council at the time authorized seventeen taps, of which four were to this gentleman. He has made a request of the S P's property near, near his home, that he would like to break up into three different parcels. And he's asked for three taps. The, there was a water study conducted. He did pay the two hundred and fifty dollars to have a water study made. Garber, our utility engineer performed the water study and indicated, and as indicated, as you can see on page two forty-five, that there is water pressure. Obviously, there are issues with the water. And this is really an issue for the city council as to whether they want to, it's outside the city limits, obviously, but whether they want a lot of the prior commitment made by the city council at that time for this property.
So the twenty-five PSI is not expected to flow, is that?
Well, the, I don't know. I had one of my staff members here who was going to speak to that.
Well, Justin's here, but the way it was described to us when we were talking about these water systems, you know, these evaluations done, is in a peak hour demand in the model, it says that, you know, hey, three gallons a minute at twenty-five PSI may not be achievable. So that peak hour is like, it's summertime, everyone's watering their yards, it hasn't rained for a while, you might go on and try to take a shower, it might be a little bit dribbly, you know? Then, you know, if you look at the next column to the left, maximum day demands. Well, you know, that's a different, that's a different flow rate in the network system. And they're saying, well, the pressure should be somewhere between forty-two and forty-six PSI. And then average day demands, you know, so, you know, maybe it's noon or, or, you know, nine, ten in the morning, you know, the, the demands aren't that high, so the pressure's a little bit better. But, you know, what, what DEQ does, you know, look at on these, you know, flows and pressures is that during peak hour demand, the system doesn't drop below twenty-five PSI. Well, what we have here is a request that was done and approved back in two thousand and two, and they just never acted on it. And, and in addition, you know, this is outside of our city limits because they came forth probably shortly thereafter saying, can we get an exception? We want some, you know, we, we want some water taps, you know? And so we're trying to honor what was granted previously before. And, but hopefully, you know, when we do this, they have to get information that, you know, yes, we're honoring this, but our, but pressures are going to be low, you know, periodically. Could be low periodically, and, and we're sorry, and we're working on trying to fix it. But when new applications like this come in today, this is a situation where we should not be, you know, dying by a thousand cuts and, and, and taking, you know, allowing people, especially outside the city limits, to get connections and to get connections and to get connections. But this is one of those, well, if, we, we kind of wish they were already in the, you know, already in our network system so, so that we didn't have to, you know, say, hey, you know, twenty years later, okay. But, but kudos for them for keeping, for keeping the documentation. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's good for them.
If I could add one suggestion we might have established that they were granted four taps. They're requesting three. If the council approves this or the board approves this, that, that they forego the.
The fourth.
The fourth tap as part of the approval process for this.
Yeah.
So then you're approved for the four taps in two thousand and two?
In two thousand and two.
And the pages here that are lightly, page two thirty-eight, those are all applications made back in two thousand and two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, and the council or the board at that time approved those. And so.
Right.
We're asking that they, the board honor that prior approval and possibly condition on granting three.
Foregoing the fourth. My main concern was because, just like with Gordon's Hollow, with not the right amount of pressure, you're going to have the same issue.
Yeah, I was wondering if maybe we asked them, or we approve it on the condition that they sign a letter of understanding that says that they understand and agree to that they won't have adequate pressure during peak demand.
I think that would be well within our.
Absolutely.
Per view to do that. Would it be appropriate to limit the size of the tap?
Well, the smallest is a five-eighths meter, and, and that's what they're applying for, is a five-eighths meter. So, yeah. And, you know, I mean, if they want to do some heavy watering in the middle of the night, you know, which is really when you should be watering, you know, they, they should have adequate pressure, you know, so.
Any bells? Can I get a motion on the application by Robert Francisco?
Yeah, I move that we approve the application of Robert Francisco on the condition that we only grant three taps and that Mr., that Robert Francisco agree to sign a letter of understanding that he may not have, that these taps may not have adequate pressure during peak demands.
Second.
Melissa.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Discussion of possible action on a resolution of the municipal authority ratifying and amending moratorium prohibiting connection to the Piedmont Utility System, service property not within the city limits of Piedmont. Mike Sigler, you got something on this?
I'd request the council approve a resolution which funding impact it. The staff has been unable to locate that two thousand and two moratorium, but we don't, it exists. We reported in the newspaper, and it was common knowledge among the constituents that it was a moratorium. So this is a ratification, if you will, of that moratorium, saying for increased size, prohibiting increased size of taps, prohibition for more taps outside the city limits, and a disconnect with normal attempts. Also, this request to the council of Ohio's in particular, there'd be no splitting of the service, so it would be one tap for one use if in the event that there were exceptions granted at some point in time.
I have one question. The, the PMA Resolution eleven dash twenty-four dash two thousand and three A, that had some exceptions for homes built prior to two thousand, that we discussed that at the previous meeting, that, that resolution is still in effect, correct?
It is.
Okay.
But that it is so narrowly defined.
Right.
That a home wouldn't affect that.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted.
Any further discussion on this?
Sounds good, Mike.
We got a motion?
Motion to approve it, I mean.
Second to that motion.
Okay, Ron.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Okay. There's no new business for the municipal authority. I'd like to postpone the manager's important remarks until we get back to the city council meeting. I'd like a motion to close the PMA meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Ron.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Okay, okay. Manager's report. Mark, do you have any force?
I have two items. I have a representative of the city council, obviously. You were able to tour the new fire engine, the fire department, just received in the last week, and it's already begun putting in operation. Vehicle costs five hundred and eight thousand, and it's very impressive, and a wonderful tribute to the fire department and their effort to keep the citizens protected by having equipment that's available and can do the, do the job for us. So very, a great addition to our, our fire department with that new fire engine. And the second, obviously, we've already discussed it, Mustang Road is scheduled to begin the week of the fourteenth of February. We're hoping that goes well, and we end up with a good product out, but I'm sure we will. That's all.
Okay. Council members' comments. Austin?
I don't have any.
John?
Yeah. Looking at the revenues for the city halfway through the fiscal year, we're at sales tax at fifty-four percent of the budgeted amount, projection. Use tax, which is what you pay for online sales, mostly catalog sales, is at eighty percent of the budgeted projection at fifty percent of the year, so that's really good.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, eight?
Eighty, eight-zero, yeah.
Halfway through the year.
I'm part of that.
Yeah. We all.
Me too. Overall, we're, the general fund revenue is sixty-four percent of the budgeted projection halfway through the fiscal year, so that's good. That's probably somewhat due to inflationary prices, but it's still, still good, I guess. Like Mark said, the fire department took delivery of the new fire truck, looked at it before the meeting. It's awesome, they got, the chief was telling me they got two identical trucks, so they can, you know, you have a backup, and they're, they work the same, so it's easy for them. I'd also like to thank Mark for the work that he's done just for a little over two months. Honestly, it's been a hundred and eighty-degree change from what we had, what I experienced before. I appreciate the information that you're providing for us on a weekly, sometimes daily basis. You know, even emails after hours, you're, you're still working. Appreciate the timeliness of your responses when we make a request or ask a question, and your identification of issues that we need to address. Also, the discussion of the chicken ordinance tonight reminds me, we need to address the problem of kids having show animals for four H and FFA. That was never really resolved, and we need to address this soon because Piedmont's going to be adding agriculture education programs starting in August. So I think we need to work on some sort of a revocable permit that would renew annually. And I think we made a mistake this evening by not at least allowing an RFQ for city attorney services to be sent out. I think we really need to look at our city attorney services. And if we're not going to seek new services, we need to get, we need to have a, we need to have a contract with the city attorney. I don't like working without a contract. I think that's not a good idea. And I hope that the citizens who are here understand that, too, and maybe they'll ask their council representatives why they think that's a good idea. That's all I have.
Ron.
I have a comment, holes. I'd like to address Brittany Anderson's comment about the holes where we've got some water mains. And I know we're, we need to know where, you know, the water line is, and, and maybe you can develop, so we don't lose it for the future, you know, a, a rebar with a small cap, you know, and well it, bury it, at least you can find it with a metal detector, you know, where it's at in the future, you know, something along those lines.
Actually, we were about the hole that she talked about. We were asked to build them last summer.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I do know, I haven't been there. We just, we need to pack it out.
Yep.
Build their hole, just so we can back them up.
And it was used to locate lines for this most big project. Oh, understood.
I don't know why they didn't get properly built back then.
Time, yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you. I know they will. In the meantime, you know, being proactive with a orange flagging and a stick or something, you know, where the hole's at, you know, always helps, you know? I mean, it, you know, we, we do have limited staff, limited resources and everything, and, you know, and if we, it's no different than someone that sees a pothole on a road and paints a big orange thing around it, just, just so that, you know, it warns, it warns the other citizens, you know? And, you know, we, we have to look out for each other, you know? We're, we're, I think, I think we, as a community, we all need to be responsible for safety of the community, you know? So if you see a problem, report it, you know? And if you can do something about it, like flagging it or doing something, do something about it. Also, tell Vance checks in the mail. We just need to do a budget amendment, you know, so you can get that truck. And I think there might be two trucks that are still, that haven't been purchased, but were, you know, previously approved in another year's budget, you know? So I think that, that'll happen really fast once we, once we get the budget amendment. It's off state contract. I'm glad we're getting four, because we have a whole bunch of Dodges from two thousand and fourteen, and we've had to replace the lifters in most, most engines at least once, if not twice. So we're about ready to just grenade those and get, you know, get new ones ourselves. We, we're doing, I think we're doing a lot of good work up here. We're trying to get things done the right way and trying to get things approved. And I appreciate, you know, the public support and, and the turnout for this meeting. Thank you.
Melissa?
Well, Ron stole mine. And I just would ask that JJ and you make sure that that gets addressed over there by Brittany's house, because I have talked to her, what, three or four times about it? And it seems like every time, no offense to you, that there's a band-aid, there's not an actual fix for it. The second thing is, is I want to make sure that Mr., I think, did he leave already? That his mortgage stuff gets straightened out. Because, I mean, that is a timely.
That's high priority.
Yeah. It's hyperbole?
That's high priority.
Oh, she said hyperbole. I was like, we're going to.
Sorry.
My, my mortgage guy is right over there. I listen to that all day long. But the other thing is, is I do appreciate you because you are very forthcoming and transparent, and I appreciate the transparency with all of us, not just some of us. And it is, in my opinion, refreshing.
I appreciate the comments, but it's our staff that really do enjoy the backbone of the city, and I appreciate all their efforts. Making me look good.
Well, they know I'm like that.
Can I add one thing? I forgot, I wanted to give kudos to the fire department for a barn fire that they responded to on Saturday. They did a great job.
A barn fire, wow.
Yep. They did a great job.
Okay, well, I got comment. I'd like to thank city staff for coming into work every day and keeping the city going and preparing this huge agenda and packet for us tonight. I'd like to thank the council members for hanging in there and doing their job tonight. You guys did great. And thank the citizens for coming out and keeping track and making sure we do our jobs. And I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, good job, Kevin. You did a good job running the meeting.